So I'm going to open up the deliberations today. And we're having deliberations for Cathedral Park Appeal, City File CU-024. And I'm going to go through and have us all introduce ourselves again. So I'm Kristin Taylor, and I'm currently the Chair.
John Borowski, Co-Chair, or Vice Chair.
John Jaworski, Commissioner.
Stephen Baker, Commissioner.
And now I'm going to turn over the mic to staff. So staff, if you can provide us with some background. And also, they're going to outline kind of the approach that we're going to take for the deliberations. We're going to keep it in order and of appeal numbers. So Gabe will review that order.
All right. Thank you. I'm Gabe Flock, Senior Planner with the city. And so following the public hearing on Tuesday night, commissioners had a number of questions or requests for additional information. And I've provided you at your places with a copy of a memorandum. It has some attachments, some of the other information that was requested. We also walked through a proposed order of deliberations that will take up the applicant's appeal first under the goalpost ruling. And then depending on how far we get in the conversation today, we're hopeful that we can work through each of the opponent's appeal issues, of which there are five. And so the memorandum provides those appeal issues for ease of reference. So you'll have it handy. We've prompted a few thoughts or considerations for each of those. We also have Ann Davies, City Attorney's Office here as well to help us with regard to the goalpost ruling issue in particular. And in a minute, I'll turn it over her to introduce that topic as the first item. So I know you haven't had a chance to read the memorandum. It was finished just this morning. And I won't go into great detail about each of the topic areas, but one had to do with multifamily standards. And Commissioner Jaworski asked about the degree of flexibility or whether or not the standards cited by the applicant were adjustable. And indeed, they are. We provided an excerpt of the multifamily standards, as well as the adjustment review approval criteria that would relate to each of those. And I think an important point on that that we touch on in the memo is it relates to the City Attorney's earlier memo regarding the goalpost ruling in that the city may not apply development standards at the building permit stage. Were doing so would result in denial of a project that was previously approved through a land use application such as this conditional use permit. And so there's essentially two potential means of relief in the event that it's determined that the multifamily standards apply. And so depending on the outcome of the goalpost ruling, that would decide whether or not we need to grapple with those current code standards, as well as other issues around Goal Five, stormwater standards, and the traffic impact analysis provisions. There was also a question about an apparent discrepancy or conflict between the Public Works referral comments that were initially provided and that of the staff report regarding the availability of public services and facilities. And so I walk through and explain a few key points about the process and the way that we typically incorporate or review the Public Works referrals in the context of a staff report. I think one important point is that, you know, the referral includes a preface that it's preliminary and it's subject to review and potential change depending on further review. And obviously, through a hearing process, these things can evolve. But most importantly, a point that I wanted to raise that's really not reflected in the Public Works referral has to do with the availability of wastewater service at 40th and Willamette Street. The referral comments did note that wastewater was not currently available at that location. And I think that in conversations with Public Works staff at the time, I neglected to or didn't have the time to go back and actually revise the referral itself. In fact, the subject sites outside of the wastewater basin that sewer system serves. And so while it's not impossible to connect to that system, what it would require is an engineering analysis to demonstrate that it has the capacity because the site and full development of it was not anticipated in the modeling of that wastewater system. So in effect, that relates to the staff's finding in the report and which led to the hearings official's decision in finding that the service was indeed available. There's also a question, I think, in the opponent's appeal about a street-cutting moratorium because Willamette Street has been repaved in recent years with bond money. And I understand that the process for obtaining a permit for a street cut in that situation does require the payment of an extra fee, but it does not preclude the possibility of cutting the street to connect to that wastewater service. So I wanted to clarify that upfront. It's also an issue we want to talk about as we get into the opponent's appeal issues, some of which are focused on that very question about access to wastewater service. There was a question as well about the conceptual level of detail in the plans. And I think it's important to recognize that, as we've discussed throughout the process, there's an exclusive and relatively narrow scope of review under the criteria for controlled income and rent housing. And I think it's important that we not compare the level of detail that we might expect. And it's true, we would expect typically a higher level of detail, say for a current code planned unit development or conditional use permit. The current code criteria are certainly more extensive and a much broader scope as to the various standards that an applicant has to address. In this case, you know, we have a fairly unique history and a relatively narrow scope of review. And so just to caution the commission that your decision really needs to be grounded in the basis of those criteria, not as compared to what might be required of an application under current code. The applicant also submitted a copy of the planning commission bylaws at the hearing and pointed to one of the objectives that talks about the planning commission cooperating with private developers and public agencies in their effort to provide an adequate supply of housing for low-income families. And I, again, just want to caution the commission that your decision needs to be based on the exclusive approval criteria. And while I think it's safe to say that based on the legislative history of changes to the CIR provisions, you know, the planning commission in the past, the city council's made substantial effort under that objective to revise those CIR criteria and intentionally create a relatively narrow scope of review to help facilitate approval of affordable housing projects. And so for that very reason, I think it's important the planning commission not rely on other adopted plans and policies or purpose statements in your bylaws in terms of making a quasi-judicial decision in this case. And so with that, following that in the memorandum, starting on page four, basically, we have listed out each of the appeal issues and some considerations for you to grapple with as you deliberate. And what we would propose is that we take the appeals in order, starting with the applicant's issue regarding the goalpost rule first. And then we'll move into the opponent's appeal and each of those five issues. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Ann to talk a little bit about the goalpost rule.
Good afternoon. I'm going to start by just talking a little bit about your process and voting today. The bylaws and the code both provide that four is a quorum for the planning commission, and you have four. It's an even number, for those mathematicians. So if we have a tie vote on any particular motion, we will revert back to what the hearings officer said. So an allegation of error will be basically denied. So that's what we're going to be up against. I want you to know that ahead of time. So when you're voting on a particular motion and you're counting votes, you know how that's going to come out, that it's going to be reverting back to what the hearings officer did. So we'll start with the applicant's appeal, which is about the goalpost rule. But really, in your mind, you need to divide it into two separate issues. And the first one is, did the hearings officer err in not reaching the goalpost issue? And then if you conclude that you can reach it somehow, then what is the answer to that? What does the goalpost rule provide with regard to development standards in the current code? So let's start with that first. And what I'm going to advise you to do is go ahead and once I give you the background on this and you have your discussion, vote on that before you move forward. That's advice. You can do it differently if you feel like it, but just to keep this moving in a logical progression. So did the hearings officer err in declining or refusing to address the goalpost issue in his decision? The applicant has provided a case on justicibility in their appeal. They claim that he could have and should have addressed that issue. Justicibility is something that is dealt within the courts. It's not really how we would analyze this. And he kind of sort of said that in his appeal statement. What we want to look at is the code and what the code provides the planning commission as far as authority. The code gives the planning commission the authority to decide appeals of some quasi-judicial land use matters. Definitely, they have the authority in this case to review this appeal. But the authority is limited to determining whether the hearings official erred. And in order to determine whether the hearings official erred in this particular issue, you have to figure out whether the hearings officer actually had the authority to decide this issue. So the way he analyzed it, the way the hearings officer analyzed it, he looked at the code. He doesn't have this in his decision, but he looked at the code and determined that his authority was limited to approving with conditions or denying the subject CIR, CUP application based on the applicable approval criteria. And that's what he did. The city had raised an issue early on about the process and whether down the road, current development standards would apply at the building permit stage. The reason that the city raised that as an issue was to basically alert the applicant and the parties to something that could be happening down the road. We didn't want to have a situation where the city was kind of presenting a gotcha situation where they got their approval on the CIR, but then later in the building permit stage brought in all these criteria that the applicant believes didn't apply. So the issue came up. The city attorney's office reviewed that issue, as did the applicant, kind of predictably came up with different answers to that question. So in researching that issue, the city attorney, before the hearings officer hearing, presented their basic conclusions on the answer to that issue, did not specifically say you need to or should to, should, address this issue, hearings officer. And the city attorney's office actually does not take the position that the hearings officer should have. The city wanted the hearings officer to address that issue and presented the issue in the event that the hearings officer chose to do that. After looking at the hearings officer's decision and his analysis of why he didn't and couldn't address that issue, the city attorney's opinion is that the hearings officer did not err in that regard. So we just want to acknowledge that that determination, that the inability to reach the goalpost issue does create complications, not just for the applicant, but for the city and for the neighbors. I mean, it draws out the process in a big way. So to the extent that the applicant or anyone could come up with some kind of process where we could get that issue addressed, we were definitely interested in looking at that. So I just want to put out there that it's not this interpretation by the city attorney's office to ruin this project at all. We'd love to get this issue resolved, but just with the law the way it is and the authority of the hearings officer and the planning commission, it's our view under the law that the hearings officer did not err in refusing to address that issue. So with that, I'll let you ask any questions, have a discussion on that particular issue before we move forward with anything else.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Baker.
Just a clarification then. So if the hearings officer didn't err, then the planning commission doesn't have to make a decision on that either, then? Is that your...
Yeah. So that's the first question with regard to the first appeal is, did he err? So if you guys vote that he did not err, then you can't get to the goalpost issue.
Commissioner Borowski.
So I just have a question as to your role in today's hearing. As I understand it, you are representing the planning commission and not the city at this hearing. Is that correct? Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Anybody want to put a motion on the table? This is the first item. So is everyone clear how we're approaching this? The first question, as Ann has described, is...
So I can put it out. I mean, I don't know the process, if you want to go through and poll the commissioners on how they're feeling on this, or if you just want to start it with a motion and then go into the discussion on the motion.
I think in order to take advantage of the time, I think a motion would be...
All right. Then I'll move that the hearings official erred in not applying the goalpost decision.
Anybody want to second that?
May I, at this time, ask staff one question? I have one question. And what was presented to us, it was indicated that when you're looking, if conditions are and the permit have to be looked at, that the applicant is objecting to, none of those can deny the project. So if there is something in there that appears not to be feasible, how do you resolve that? In other words, if you can't connect to water, and if you can't, that would deny the project, and you can't deny the project, as an example, I'm not saying that, how does that get resolved?
Well, I think that's a difficult question to answer because of the scope of potential criteria under current code and because of the high degree of flexibility that's granted to the applicant in terms of the number and mix of units, the location of the improvements. I mean, there's a lot of uncertainty in terms of exactly which phase will go forward and what will constitute because of the very conceptual nature of their plan. And so I think that's one of the concerns on the part of both the city and the applicant is that uncertainty. The answer to your question will depend on what it is they propose and which standards actually are invoked as a result of that. So it's difficult to answer in a general way. But what I would say is sort of consistent with the multifamily standards themselves is one option may be, under current code, certain standards are adjustable, although that in and of itself would require another land use application and public process. In other cases, it may be that it's infeasible to meet the standard and that, in effect, we would not be able to apply it. And so building permit process, for example, if they could not meet a certain standard, they would be able to proceed with that aspect of the project without an application of the standard.
Just one more final one. If I understand correctly, if this goes forward and the applicant has to apply for various permits, during that process for these permits and/or even requests for adjustments or whatever, let's assuming that might happen, is there any public input or is this all done in-house?
Well, again, it will depend on the nature of the request and whether or not it triggers a land use application under current code. If it does trigger an adjustment review, for example, or a traffic impact analysis, or a standards review under Goal Five provisions, then indeed, there would be a public process, public notice, a planning director-level decision, and opportunity for appeal. In other cases, it may be that building permits requested and that no public notice or, you know, related process would be needed or available. I think one of the questions, though, to be fair, or issues on the part of the applicant's concerns, is worth noting here that there could be discretion involved in determining which standards apply and whether or not to throw them out. And a question I think staff has at this point, which I don't know that we can answer today, is would any of those determinations in and of themselves constitute a land use decision under state law? So it's possible that some of those decision points in the future, while not required under code, under state law, it could trigger the need for notice and opportunity for appeal. I think that's one of the concerns about cost and potential delay and uncertainty on the part of the applicant. And so that's sort of a counterpoint in regards to the goalpost rule.
Thank you.
Commissioner Baker.
I've got a point of order. Point of order. We have a motion on the floor that hasn't been seconded, so there is not discussion on it. And that was one of my concerns about this process, is we don't have the opportunity to bring up our points. If we put the motion on the floor and it's not seconded, it dies. And there's not the opportunity for discussion. So at this point, I'd like to remove my motion from the floor.
And forgive me, I thought I heard Chair Taylor second the motion. Is that not...
Yeah, I didn't.
Yeah, there wasn't a second, so at that point.
And so, you know, I might need some assistance with Robert's rules of order in terms of if it...
Sure.
So right now, if a motion is taken off, can it be brought back?
Yes.
I mean, that's when we get, okay. I just want to make sure. So quite frankly, I was thinking that we didn't have enough discussion, but there was complete silence. Yeah, exactly.
Usually, you have to have the motion seconded for discussion to begin.
Right. I get that. Thanks. Commissioner Baker.
Well, I'll defer to Commissioner...
Commissioner Jaworski.
Yeah, I just had a comment. I don't necessarily agree with that. If a motion necessarily doesn't get a second, that ends discussion on the motion, but not on the issues related to it.
Well, it should have been with...
So I think we can still discuss what the Commissioner Borowski was trying to make a motion to, but not in the terms of how he worded the motion. And I think that's how it is. So it hasn't precluded any discussion, I believe, Commissioner Borowski. And one of those in the participants, unless someone has challenged it, I would definitely agree to further discussion.
Okay.
Well, I think we're clear now.
Yeah. Yeah, it seems like we are. Commissioner Baker.
I move that we find that the hearings official did not make an error in this determination.
I'll second that for discussion.
So now we can have a discussion.
So, you know, I have to, I'm... Counsel, I have a question.
Yes.
So essentially, based on the information in the record, as you said, there's a lot of information on case law around the goalpost rule. If we make a decision that the hearings official did not err, as you said, we can't, we're not going to then obviously have a discussion about the goalpost rule.
Right.
So at the time, so if it moves forward, when it gets to a permit stage, and some of these items potentially come up, like multifamily standards, then they don't have an opportunity at that point for, so they would have to go through the appeal process now and appeal it to Luba.
So I understand, I think I understand what your concern is, that we don't address the issue now. We get to the building permit stage. How are they going to... We've taken our position. How are they going to challenge that? I mean, I'm assuming that's your concern. And the way I kind of see it playing out is, and it's not ideal, you know, I would love, as I said, I would love for the hearings officer to have figured out a way to get to it. But I think that the building permits will themselves become discretionary, which creates a land use process. So we may actually end up having to have a land use process with a building permit application because they will be discretionary. And in that, when the first building permit comes in, that we're trying to apply development standards, I think there will be a process for them to make that argument. Apart from that, there could be a way for them to go to circuit court to get a declaratory judgment, which nobody wants to do. So, you know, practically speaking, this process is not ideal.
Commissioner Jaworski.
Yeah, I second Commissioner Baker's motion. And I believe that the motion, as I understood it, which I want him to clarify, was that the hearings official did not err regarding the goalpost rule. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So if that's the case, and it's been seconded, then there is going to be a discussion on the goalpost rule because we're going to open it up right now, Chair. So we'll have a full discussion on it. It's just been a motion and a second.
Okay.
Okay.
So I wasn't clear, sorry, Commissioner Baker, that you actually made a motion.
Yeah, you did.
So, great. Okay. Thank you.
Seconded by Commissioner Jaworski.
Okay. Thank you.
That was part to allow us to...
To continue the discussion.
Any discussion and not break any or bend any rules, Robert's rules.
Okay. So it seems like we're on track. Sorry, this is... Okay. Commissioner Baker.
Yeah. I'm looking at attachment 15 on the PDF, which is Eugene City Code 202 excerpt of Cert Cup Approval Criteria. This is for 2002. And I'm looking at this, some of the wording here. It says, for example, on void unnecessary removal of attractive natural vegetation, a commitment by the applicant to provide private services and facilities acceptable to the appropriate public agencies. I don't know how you would make that a 2002 standard because those agencies are not there anymore to make that determination. I mean, it would be acceptable by what the current agency is operating. I just don't see how you could convert that into a 2002 standard. I mean, and some of these other ones are similar. That's just my comment.
Your comment.
Just that a lot of these depend on appropriate to public agencies. You know, these are the requirements for the controlled income housing criteria. And yes, a lot more elaborate, but there's just no way to bring back the agency from 2002 to make that determination. The agency you have now will be the agency during that determination, and they'll use their current rules, which might have been affected by federal standards that have occurred between 2002 and 2016. So, I mean, they can't, you know, there's, you know, that's the point I wanted to make.
If I may...
Commissioner Jaworski.
If I may, if you would. I believe... I seconded the motion because we're talking about the hearings official's decision regarding the goalpost rule. In looking at his decision, he indicated in the actual decision that it would be very difficult speculative and advisory to try to make a ruling on this. And I agree with that. Secondly, he said that this application specifically is for a CUP and not for a building permit. And he states that in his comments. And that is why I even asked that if some of the conditions were applied of staff, that are any of them capable of being adjusted or whatever? And they applied that they are. And then hearing that, and the official stated this here, that none of those conditions can result in a denial of the project, I therefore feel and support that he did not in any way err because it is still open.
Okay. Commissioner Borowski.
Okay. So for me, I feel the opposite way. I feel that the hearings official did err. And the reason I base that on, the initial reason, I have lots of reasons why I feel that he did, but in that statute for the control... that he did, but in that statute for the controlled income properties, it says, "Approval or denial of the application shall be based on the standards and criterias that were applicable at the time the application was first submitted." So for me, what is the question, and what was eloquently, in my opinion eloquently, shown by the applicant, was that the words standard and criteria are what we're looking at here. And are standards and criterias, are they being held to the 2002 standards and criterias? Because that is just of the goalpost issue. So what Commissioner Jaworski has alluded to is that these new criterias may or may not be able to be met, and we can deal with that at that point. My opinion is, and I think that attorney could come to favorable findings on this, that the new criteria that may be required at a building permit stage are in fact standards and criterias, and they cannot be applied. That's why I felt that the hearings official has erred. I'm not looking at whether or not this is going to get built, whether or not, if it does get built, that they can go through another land use thing and they can deny it. It's, are what the city attorney proposed in the city attorney's memo, standards and criteria. And in my reading of what is in the records, I believe they are, and that's why I believe the goalpost standard should apply. Now, that being said, we can parse this, and we can do what we need to do to say, okay, well, maybe the water overlay will, can get taken care of down the road. All that's going to do is going to add time and expense to this project, and as the developer said, it may kill it. We heard that in the testimony. I feel that my job as a planning commissioner is to help this city grow in a responsible way, and I think that this project is doing that. And I think that we have had plenty of testimony from a lot of people, ranging from Thousand Friends of Oregon to the Home Builders Association, all in favor of this, and all feeling that the goalpost rule should not apply in order for this to get built. And so I think it would be wrong for us to not apply it. I think that if we don't, it's going to be appealed, it's going to be another cost, and it's going to go up, and it's going to be years, and we're not going to have more of what the city needs most of all, and that's lower income housing. So I would be voting against this motion, and I have plenty of things that I can cite if people want me to, as far as my opinion on this. But at this point, I'll let it go.
Thank you. Commissioner Jaworski.
With regard to Commissioner Jaworski's comments, just to say what I had said prior and point out one little area, I think when the hearings official cited that this application is not for a building permit, but for a CUP. So in that particular vein, I do not feel that it applies to all standards across the board. I might also say that I too am here to see that the city grows properly, as well as all commissioners, but we are bound to do those by the rules that govern the way that we make decisions and the codes that we need to follow. And I think that in this case, the process is very clear.
So I'm going to put myself in the queue. I don't think this process is clear, actually. It's complicated, and I have lots of notes. So for, I don't, you know, and I spent a lot of time on this, I am really leaning towards, I have a lot of very detailed questions that, quite frankly, if we, based on how we're starting this discussion, to some degree, become irrelevant. But I really, I stand in the position, I wanted the hearings official to basically bring in the goalpost rule. And so really where I sit is that I think he erred. I think it's, and to some degree, I think that's oversimplified potentially, but once again, I might be overthinking this. It's, so I just think that it's not, it's, and I can ask staff, in my opinion, after reading it, and then we ask the question, is it truly a two-step process? And the hearings official, he calls it a two-step process, but in essentially, from a discretionary permit process, it really is a one-step, I mean, CUP is a one-step application process. So if the applicant goes in to submit a permit without understanding the goalpost rule, they could, the whole thing, I mean, not the whole thing, but a lot of this can restart again at a permit level. So, you know, I'm really disappointed in the hearings official, quite frankly. So that's the position I am taking for this motion, which, you know, it's 2-2. And, I mean, we can vote, we haven't, sorry, I'm breaking the rules all over the place. So we have a motion on the table, and I should have practiced Roberts' rules of order before I started. So let's take a vote.
You're going to end discussion at this point?
Sorry, yes, thank you. John, you can keep me on your call.
Yeah, I'll be the parliamentarian.
Okay. Commissioner Baker.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment. I have to agree with Commissioner Jaworski. I do think it's a two-step process, because there are a lot of other permits that are still required. There's PEPY, there's tree removal, in other words, it's cited in the record, all of the other requirements that are required, including that its hydro soils have to get state and federal approval for any removal of those. So, or displacement, or whatever you want to call it. So there are a lot of other steps in the process. So I have to agree with Commissioner Jaworski. I think it is a two-step process, no matter what. It's a multi-step process because of these other requirements that have to be met eventually. And so I would have to agree with Commissioner Jaworski.
I'll put myself in the queue just to respond to that. I mean, if you look at a tree removal permit, it's a very separate, discreet application. So anyways, you have to look back in the case law. So, yes, while you're right, I think in the context of this, I don't, I'm not sure that it applies to the question that we're addressing right now. Any other points of discussion?
Yeah.
Commissioner Jaworski.
So I guess it would be helpful to me if some of my other commissioners could explain to me the reasoning behind the fact that your second step process isn't a standard or criteria. Because the goalpost rule says that approval or denial shall be based upon the standards and criteria that were applicable at the time the application was first submitted. So what you're saying is that these things that you're saying that will come up in permit stage are not standards or criteria. Is that my, your reasoning?
Commissioner Jaworski, and then Commissioner Baker.
That's maybe what you feel, Commissioner Jaworski, but that's not what I'm saying. I'm not saying they're not standards and criteria. I'm saying that they are two separate applications, an application for a CUP and an application for a permit, which I cited, the hearings official also referenced as two separate applications. So I don't, you know, I'm not saying that they're not standards and criteria, they're standards and criteria under that particular permitting application procedure, which is the second step.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes, and again, referring to requirement number two in the 2002 code for a CIR CUP, it says, "A commitment by the applicant to provide private services and facilities acceptable to the appropriate public agencies." It doesn't give approval to the plan, it says there's a commitment by the applicant to submit plans that are, you know, appropriate to the public agencies. And again, the agency that's going to be determining this is 2016 or 2017 or 2020. You can't go back and have the, you know, create some agency that existed 14 years ago to make that determination.
Doesn't the first part of that statute say that if services are not available, then Section 2 triggers?
It says, "Public facilities and services are available to the site if the..."
And then it triggers the second section that you're quoting.
Right, but the point is, they're available adjacent nearby, but they're not adjacent to the site, so there will be required, there are requirements for PEPY and all these other things that...
However, there is a case law that says that all they have to say is that they're available to the site to approve that criteria. And I can find that in the packet, but there was a case law that said, you don't have to prove that they're adequate at the time of approval for a CIR. That would be the Norwalk decision.
But this says it has to be, indicates that they will be available prior to the need for reason of, so they have to be available prior to this.
They have to be available, they don't have to be adequate.
Right, but they have to be available to the site, and right now, they aren't, you can't get to the site without changing the CUP for the other things, or going through some neighborhood property, someone else's property to get to them. To me, that doesn't mean that they're...
Available.
Available prior to the need by reason of.
So it sounds like, yeah...
And that doesn't mean that they couldn't be made available, but they aren't, they weren't available then, and they aren't available now.
The hearings official said they were available.
Hang on one second. Commissioner Jaworski, hang on one second, staff.
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of redirect the conversation, because we want to do this in an orderly fashion.
Organized way.
So the question really that I think you're trying to get an answer to is, did the hearings officer err in declining to get to the goalpost rule?
Yep.
And it sounds like we've got two different positions on that issue.
Yeah, we have a discussion underneath that.
And I'll just add to that, and to point out that within the opponent's appeal, the issue of availability of services and facilities is most certainly raised, and I think that that discussion will follow whatever your determination might be on the goalpost rule.
Yeah, that's a good point.
So we'll have an opportunity for that discussion.
That's a good point, thank you. Commissioner Jaworski.
Well, it stole us, I was going to say, I was virtually going to say that I didn't feel that this discussion, the way it was going, was relevant to the goalpost rule, because it has to do on whether or not the CUP is approved or disapproved, not what standards or criteria apply toward making future decisions on it. So that's all I was going to say, similarly.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Any other, Commissioner Jaworski.
I don't want to take away, okay, hearing and seeing no other discussion, I would call for the question.
Okay. So all those in favor? All those opposed? So can you repeat, so essentially, what's going to happen because of the tie vote, is that the hearings official's decision that he did not err stands?
So just to recap, so that was the first of two issues in the first appeal.
Yes.
So we won't get to the goalpost issue, which, let's just agree that everyone is disappointed with, is, it's following the rules of the process, so...
Yeah, makes sense.
In my opinion.
Question?
Yeah.
If deliberations continue...
Yeah.
And a further member of the planning commission is involved, can this, can we reopen this issue once a motion has been made?
I am going to look at that question, because it came up before the meeting, and I'm going to, I'm going to find an answer to that this afternoon.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, Commissioner Jaworski.
If I understand that legal is either the motion, the second, or someone who voted in favor of the motion can reopen that, and we only have two who did. Thank you.
Okay.
But a new motion could be put out?
I'm going to look, I'm going, I'll look into that.
Okay, the second item, staff, can you please, yeah, can you please...
Moving into the opponent's appeal, where we'll be addressing some of the issues that you were trying to get at earlier.
Okay, so that, did you have something to add, Gabe?
No, just in the event that we're moving on to the opponent's appeal, I could just briefly introduce it.
Yeah, please.
Yeah. So their first appeal issue asserts that the public wastewater services are not available to the entire project. Since EC 9.724-2A requires that public services and facilities be available, this failure regarding wastewater services violates the code's approval criteria. The commission should find that the hearings official erred in finding that public wastewater services are available to the proposed development, should reverse the hearings official's decision, and should deny the application. And I would just refer back to the initial discussion in the memorandum about the public works referral comments, and I think it's an important point that may affect, you know, the outcome here in terms of the question of availability under that standard. And in fact, staff's understanding is that the wastewater service would be available, but what it would require is for the applicant to provide some engineering analysis to demonstrate the feasibility, since their site is not within the wastewater basin served by that manhole and the wastewater system. One option for the commission, depending on your discussion, could be to add a condition of approval that requires that analysis to demonstrate feasibility. I'll leave it at that and let the discussion continue, but just wanted to present the possibility that, and to note that if you do end up modifying the hearings official's decision, whether it's on this point or any of the future appeal issues, in terms of changing a condition or even reversing, we'll need direction, clear direction today, so that we can help prepare the supplemental findings that would support your conclusion on that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. And I just wanted to, I know there's only four of us, and quite frankly, it's gotten a little informal, and I'd love, just because I think these next items might end up having more discussion that's lively, wait for your turn in the queue, and I will call you, and if I don't see you, just put your hand a little farther front, because it doesn't take much for me to view both sides. And if for some reason somebody catches staff and I haven't seen them, just tap me, or, but let's try to keep it organized, just so that we can respect each other's time as we're speaking. So let's talk about discussion for the first item. Commissioner Jaworski.
Under this criteria, if I understand it, that it's necessarily not need to be available to the entire project, but available to the site, is that correct, staff?
That is correct.
Okay. So in that regard, I think that the hearings official did not err here in looking at this, because it is available to the site, and during the permit process, I'm sure something could be done to see that engineer, whatever is required at that time to determine that would suffice.
Thank you. I'm going to put myself in the queue. I agree with Commissioner Jaworski. Any other?
I move that the hearings official did not err on issue number one.
I second it.
I'll second, okay. Oh, you did?
Yeah, I did. That's all right. Discussion. Okay, we will call the question. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. We'll move to item number two. Gabe, do you want to continue kind of the procedure?
Yes, I'd be glad to continue on with that approach. On our appeal issue number two, I'll just read it out here. The 1995 conditional use permit restricts the applicant's ability to develop the site and to access roads and utilities on other parts of the cemetery. Therefore, the applicant cannot make the requisite commitment under EC 9.724-2A subsection 2 to provide private services and facilities. The commitment under that criterion is, an approval criterion, and evidence of the applicant's ability to make the commitment must be available before an approval can be granted. Accordingly, the commission should hold that the hearings official erred in granting the approval conditioned upon the applicant obtaining a new CUP in the future, and should reverse his decision and deny the application.
A discussion on the second item. Commissioner Baker, and then Commissioner Jaworski.
Yes, to the...
Yes, to the, do the cup rules talk at all about the order of applying cups and order of removal?
If you're referring to the relationship of the existing cemetery CUP and the current CUP and this, as it was described in the hearing, the chicken and egg question, no, the code does not have any explicit provision that would require the applicant, for example, as asserted by opponents, to obtain that new cemetery CUP approval first in order to, you know, shrink the footprint of cemetery use and free up the land for the CIR housing. So no, the code does not have any clear provision that defines the order of operations there. And this issue will come up again, I think, in one or more of the appeal issues, but it's a good question. It's one of the key issues, I think, from opponent's perspective about the requirements of the underlying cemetery, and it has frankly been a concern for the city as well in terms of the conditions of approval related to the 75-foot tree buffer and other conflicts that this proposal for development would present. So, but we do understand that the applicant has, intends to, and is in the stages of preparing that conditionally used permit, and of course, it's also a condition of approval that they obtain that before proceeding with the development in the hearings official's decision, so.
Add a follow-up question?
Can you, is that okay?
Yeah, this is just for legal. Is there any, our staff attorney here, is there any legal precedent for the order of...
I'm not aware of any precedent, but to, for what it's worth, the city attorney doesn't have an issue with the way the hearings officer is.
Okay.
Commissioner Borowski.
To me, I believe that the hearings official addressed this in their conditions of approval by condition number three, that the CIR property will be developed solely within the CIR housing, and that he must seek a new CUP. So I think that that gets to this.
Commissioner Jaworski.
I concur. I think his condition four, which requires him to have another cup before he can proceed in order to change the property, is addressing this particular issue. And I think that even if that other cup is not approved to that extent, I think he has an opportunity to modify the layout of some of that so that maybe it does stay on the property as much as possible. So I do not think the hearings official erred here.
Okay, any other, well, I can add mine is I actually concur with Commissioner Borowski and Jaworski. So any other discussion? Okay, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? Oh, have we had a motion? Oh, this works. Okay. Does anybody want to make a motion?
I move that the hearings official did not err on opponent's appeal, item number two. Please, a second.
Yeah, okay. I'll let Commissioner Jaworski be the second. Okay, anymore, now, any discussion? No, then I will call the question. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Okay, now we move to item three, appeal issue from the opponent.
Yeah.
Thank you, Gabe.
You're welcome. So appeal issue number three, there is insufficient evidence in the record regarding the proposed private stormwater services and the proposed private street in violation of the requirements of EC 9.724 subsection 2A2. The commission should therefore hold that the hearings official erred in finding there was sufficient evidence regarding the proposed private stormwater services and the proposed private street, should reverse the decision and should deny the application. There's also a sub-issue regarding the street. The applicant's failure to meet the applicable private street standards and the general lack of evidence to demonstrate the function and safety of circulation, ingress and egress violate the approval requirement of EC 9.724 subsection 2B3. Accordingly, the commission should reverse the hearings official's decision and deny the application. And again, I'd just add that I think, to some extent, the staff's clarification in regards to the Public Works referral comments and a number of conditions of approval that have been established in the hearings official's decision essentially respond to this issue, and I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Any discussion? Commissioner Borowski.
Yeah, it's in my opinion that they, we don't get to subsection 2 if, of that criteria on 97242, we don't get to subsection A if the first set of that criteria is met, that it shows that there is services to the site, and we've already decided that. So if you decide that there is services available to the site, then subsection A is not in play. So I think that this, I would move that the hearings official did not err in appeal item three. And that section is on PC, page nine is the, is the criteria, 97242.
Commissioner Baker.
They got to have a second. I made the motion, so I'm looking for a second at this point.
Okay. Commissioner Baker, are you seconding the motion?
I was going to make some comments.
Is there anybody that wants to second the motion?
Clarity on the motion, is the motion...
That he did not err.
On issue three or...
On issue three.
Regarding the street also?
On issue three.
The whole issue three and the sub-issue?
Yeah. I mean, we have to have a motion that he erred or didn't err to, you know, so I said that he did not err.
Just to be clear, if I may, does the motion include the sub-issue or does it not? I mean, there are two different subsections addressed, Commissioner Borowski, and so...
I just said number three because it was put forward as appeal issue number three.
Okay.
Is there anybody that wants to second the motion at this point? Okay, so, menu education, we will, oh, do you want to second the motion?
Oh, I thought you, sorry.
So we'll table that motion for now.
No, no.
Oh.
The motion failed.
Failed.
Well, it didn't receive a second.
Didn't receive a second, used the wrong word. So we'll continue the discussion. Commissioner Jaworski.
Yeah, the hearings official, in my mind, in his number seven recommendation, appeared to address the street standards by saying that things like this would be addressed in the final application for permitting. Am I wrong in assuming that that's what the hearing official was suggesting in number seven of his conditions?
Let me find it.
And I'm only talking to the subsection under number three right now.
Okay, so condition number seven, I'll just read it for the benefit of the audience here. So it says that final plans for any phase shall demonstrate that any proposed street meets the local street standards as described in the Eugene Arterial and Collector Street Plan dated November 1999, including but not limited to maximum grade requirements, sidewalk requirements, site distance requirements, and traffic controls that might be needed at the proposed intersections.
Six also.
Oh, and Alyssa mentions that there's a related condition. Cathedral Way shall at a minimum meet private street construction standards for paving width and depth, site distance, maximum grade, and sidewalks.
Okay, my understanding of that leads to confusion across of the vote that we took on the goalpost rule. What he's indicating here is he wants to apply some standards for streets that go back to 1999. So what would happen there is, is that condition I can't agree with because it conflicts with our other prior vote or things that he had said.
Yeah, I'd be happy to help clarify that. One of the things that Staff reviewed in the initial recommendation was whether or not those private street standards were in effect at the time of the application in 2002, or had they changed under current code. And in fact, they have been in effect all along, and so there is, there is no discrepancy there. And so I don't think that it's an issue with regard to the goalpost rule, but this condition is necessary and appropriate to make sure that, you know, the access is providing safe ingress and egress. So in the context of the CIR criteria, it's grounded, it's grounded in that, it's a justified condition, and the standards haven't changed since 2002.
Okay, so just to make clear, Madam Chairman.
Yeah.
As regarding the sub-issue, should that come up, I feel he did not err on the sub-issue, and I feel that I'm still open to more discussion on the general issue of three.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Commissioner Baker.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify too that when we voted on appeal issue number one, that dealt with wastewater services, not other services. That appeal was just for wastewater services.
Right.
So it's not, yeah, it doesn't cover this.
Did you want to add anything else?
Not this time.
Yeah, it's something I think we should be careful of. If you look at the appeal issue number three, not the sub-issue, it's actually two criterion that are kind of being looked at. It's one, because if you look at the stormwater, private stormwater services, I mean, the way, unless Staff, you want to clarify this, really is looking at public facilities and services available, so this question of are they available? But then you go to subsection 2B, and now you're talking specifically about three items, and that is the vegetation, setbacks and screening, and safe and usable parking, circulation, outdoor living.
I would just point out that Staff's in agreement with the statement that Commissioner Borowski made, that I don't think we reached the question under subsection 2 there if we determined that public services and facilities are available to the site in the first instance. So on the one hand, it could be found that we don't even reach the standard with regard to private stormwater and private street standards. But I do believe that the condition of approval, or conditions, plural, I should say, related to the private street, actually fall under the subsection in the criteria about safe ingress and egress. So again, the requirement for the private street standards to be met
Right.
is well justified in the context of the criteria. I'm not as clear on the stormwater services, but what I would say is that the high degree of flexibility afforded in the hearings official's decision would defer, you know, that decision of a design of a private stormwater system to serve dwellings and paved areas to a building permit stage because we don't really know the specific layout and design. It wouldn't be, it just wouldn't make sense to have a system fully designed for development that's not, you know, as detailed as you might expect for something under current code or, given the conceptual nature of it, I think it's justified that they not have a fully developed plan for stormwater at this point.
Yeah, thank you for the clarification, because you're right, the subsection 2B3 is really specific to ingress and egress and not the actual road, so thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other comments by commissioners?
So we need a motion. I don't know, I put one out and it didn't get a second, so I don't know how the commission is planning on advancing this issue.
Commissioner Jaworski.
At this time, I'd like to move that under appeal issue three, and also the sub-issue regarding the street, that the hearings official did not err.
Okay, anybody want to second that?
I second.
Okay, discussion. Okay, since there's no, oh, Commissioner Baker.
Yeah, my, one of the criteria from the, from the hearings official was that, was about surface water and stormwater, number five.
Number five in the conditions of approval?
Yeah, conditions. Yeah, and I'm, I'm a little concerned about that and some issues with, you know, well, it's not clear to me, you know, how we're treating creeks these days, or how we're supposed to have treated creeks in 2002 either, so.
So can I take a look at appeal issue number four? Because I think it might actually address more of your concerns, but take a look at that.
You mean condition number four?
No, appeal issue number four, so take a look at that.
Good talk.
Okay, Commissioner Jaworski.
That's what I was going to say.
Great.
Yeah, no, but I realize that in relation to this one about stormwater.
Okay.
I think there's a relationship there, so I'm a little concerned about, maybe we should look at four first and then come back and look at three.
There's a motion on the floor.
Yeah.
Okay, no.
Okay, no other further comments? So I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, Gabe, whenever you're ready, appeal issue number four from the opponent.
Appeal issue number four states that the piping of Braeburn Creek and the capture piping and pumping of surface and stormwater to irrigate other parts of the cemetery unnecessarily removes attractive natural vegetation in violation of EC 9.724B1, I believe it's subsection 2B1. The commission should hold that the hearings official erred in finding that piping in the creek is necessary for wastewater and stormwater management, and should hold that the piping of the creek will unnecessarily remove attractive natural vegetation in violation of EC 9.724 subsection 2B1. I do want to make a few preliminary comments if I could, and just to remind the commission that Staff's initial recommendation related to the piping of the creek basically raised similar concerns about the potential for unnecessary removal of vegetation. Staff concluded that the proposal for piping the entire stream segment was, and the related construction impacts would involve vegetation removal for purposes other than what is necessary for the CIR housing, and to that extent that it would be in violation of the standard. Our position at the time was that removal of that aspect of the applicant's plan would actually help them demonstrate compliance with the criterion, and that there would be a variety of other means to handle stormwater runoff without piping the full stream segment. I think it's important to note the hearings official's rationale, it was pretty specific to the applicant's explanation that they needed to pipe the sanitary line underneath or through the creek in order to get to the manhole on the other side, and he concluded that that, and that the actual drainage of stormwater into the creek necessitated the piping of the stream segment. At that, at the initial stage of Staff's recommendation, we did propose a condition that would have required removal of that aspect of the applicant's plans, and so in the memorandum, I provided that as a counterpoint. And to get to Commissioner Baker's concern on the previous item, the hearings official's condition says that the applicant may capture, pipe, and pump any surface water and/or stormwater flowing on the property to a holding reservoir to be used for irrigation, so long as the applicant obtains all required city, state, and/or federal permits that may be necessary. And so I do think this is an issue where hearings official disagreed with Staff's reading of it. I wanted to point that out for you and note that, you know, depending on the outcome of the commission's discussion, it would be possible to modify the decision and provide supplemental findings if that's, if that's the case. So I'll leave it at that and open it up for discussion.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Jaworski.
Yeah, I have a question. If, if we feel the commission erred here, it is my, and what he has stated is okay. To me, that doesn't mean a denial of the application. Or do we even have to do that if he is going to come under the current permits and it would be addressed at that time, no matter what we did?
It's an interesting question as it relates to the current Goal 5 regulations, and I think I'd point out for the benefit of the public and all the parties here that Staff's re- staff's reading of those current standards, if applicable, would preclude full piping of the stream corridor. And so the question I can't fully answer is how that process would play out. There are, though, and we pointed this out in the initial staff report, that there would be other ways to demonstrate compliance with the Goal Five regulations and to accommodate stormwater runoff, for example, with a new outfall that would discharge to the creek and meet the standards in those Goal Five provisions without the need to pipe the stream segment. And so we see feasible alternatives even in the event that Goal Five standards will apply, but back to the goalpost rule, I mean, to the extent that any of those standards would cause the project to be denied, we would not be able to apply them. I see a way through the interpretation of the code to carry forward the approval without the piping of the stream.
Commissioner Baker.
Yeah, I wanted to make two comments. One, I wanted to point out that in the, in the report in the records from the Urban Forester in 2002, he noted that the removal of vegetation would increase stormwater runoff by 25%. So to me, that would indicate that it doesn't make a lot of sense, because now you still have additional stormwater runoff from that. And also, I think it would be better to just, even though the new standards would apply, it would be better to remove any confusion, discrepancy, so I would be, I would be reluctant to, I would, I would favor if we're, if we think that, I would favor removing any discrepancy between the hearings official and the goalpost rule.
Commissioner Jaworski.
When I look at the hearings official's condition, he says that this can be done to be used for irrigation. He doesn't, to me, distinguish between irrigation on the site use itself for whatever they put in for vegetation and what have you, but the appeal virtually is saying that it's to be used for the cemetery issue, which I see as separate, to be used in an area, not in the site itself. That's what's confusing me, is was the hearing official saying it could be used anywhere? Or was he just saying it could be used for irrigation? That's unclear in what he did, and I don't know if you even impose standards later, Goal Five, whether they deal with where it's used. They deal how and what it does to the water, and not necessarily where they use it. Is that correct?
Well, I think it's important to recognize, I think you're on to something in terms of the language of hearings official's condition, that it does not define, let's see, let's read it again. "The applicant may capture, pipe, and pump any surface water and/or stormwater flowing on the property to a holding reservoir to be used for irrigation so long as the applicant obtains all the necessary permits."
Yeah, and what I asked you is, is in those permits, they don't address where he irrigates, they just address the impacts on the water and how that whole process is set up to do that. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so it doesn't address the appeal per se, okay. Was there anywhere, I went through the record, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I went through the record and I couldn't find, I had some problems with my computer and able to read the discs and things. Does the record state that the applicant wanted to use this irrigation specifically for other cemetery areas outside of the site?
At least one point, or more than one point, in the applicant's narrative, yes, they specified early on in the process that the intent was to use it for irrigation of cemetery lawns. Since then, I think it's become less clear as to whether or not it would be solely for that purpose or for some other purpose.
Commissioner Baker.
No, that was the point I made. If you look in, I think it's 1995, some of the earliest records is where they talk about that.
I think it's also in their original narrative from 2002.
Okay, it might very well be. I remember seeing it in several places.
Commissioner Jaworski.
I don't know if this is appropriate. I feel that since other permitting things are going to address this, that I would not feel he erred, but is it possible for add another condition that if, in fact, irrigation is approved, no matter how or in what form or whatever, that it only be used for the site? Or is that beyond our scope?
Well, it's an interesting question about the scope of review. It's not clear, entirely clear to me where this criterion falls in regards to the, you know, justification. It's couched in terms of the criteria about unnecessary vegetation removal. And so if we assume that's the, you know, where the condition is borne out of, I don't think it would really define or allow us to define specifically where the water would be used.
Wouldn't that be determination on how much vegetation is removed? If he's only irrigating, let's say, a half an acre of land around these sites versus irrigating acres of cemetery land, that's a big difference on what they're going to need and require.
Right. Well, frankly, I don't think we have enough evidence to know.
Okay.
So I'm going to, I'm going to put myself in the queue, and then Commissioner Baker. That's actually where my concern lies, is just if we look specifically at the criterion of void unnecessary removal of attractive vegetation. I don't think the hearings official gets at the crux of the criterion, some of his conditions. There's, you know, the, there's just not enough specificity in terms of, for instance, they can capture, pipe, pump for the use of irrigation, but, and that irrigation or the length of the pipe and its need to actually be piped in order to actually serve the site. I guess I'm wondering at the permit level, and I'm, once again, I'm kind of confused because of how the goalpost rule is going to be addressed or not. What happens at permit? I mean, because really, the criterion is unnecessary vegetation. So if a pipe is being expanded or vegetation's being impacted because of a stormwater facility that actually is serving somewhere else on the site, I don't think that's consistent with a criterion. I'm assuming that the, you know, are you going to catch that later on, or should we look at the conditions of approval more closely?
Well, I don't know that you necessarily need to reach the question of exactly how the water would be used.
No, that's right.
In order to make the finding, which I think you stated a preference for finding that there was, that it would result in unnecessary vegetation.
Exactly.
So I think it's, it's good that the Commission would focus its findings and its decision based on that criterion, and it may be that you need not reach the question of, well, exactly what happens in a permitting process? Whether it's a public improvement for the, for the
Yeah.
Stormwater outfall, or a pump system, or the irrigation reservoir, really, those are, I mean, as a result of the goalpost ruling, in this case, you know, those are deferred to a future stage. Really, the question at hand is, is there sufficient evidence to show that there's a need for the pipe, piping of the full stream segment in order to accommodate the CIR housing, at least from staff's perspective?
Yeah.
And staff's been concerned all along that there isn't really a solid basis or justification under the criteria for the allowance and the very explicit allowance that's embedded in Condition Number Five by the hearings official.
Perfect. Thank you. That's really helpful. No, Commissioner Baker, sorry.
So I'm trying to follow you. So if we were following you, then you would, you would be implying that at least if we forget about where the water is being used for irrigation, that, that the removal of attractive vegetation, Appeal Issue Four would not, would, would be, you'd be in favor of approving that to remove the inconsistency, then?
That's correct, and I wanted to comment on your earlier mention of that. From staff's perspective, addressing this issue in the appeal now, I think, would help resolve potential confusion at the time of any future permitting process in regards to the Goal Five regulations. So by addressing that issue now, I think will save some potential confusion in the future.
Goal Five. So Goal Five was not in effect at, in 2002, right? Just for clarification?
Correct.
Perfect. Any other discussion?
Yeah. From what I heard in the proposed staff condition of approval, that would mean that you would want to remove Condition Number Five and insert instead the staff recommended condition?
That is correct. What we pulled forward in your memorandum is the initially, you know, recommended condition. I can read that out loud for the benefit of the group. Let's see if I can find it here. And I would just add that, you know, we can, we can modify this as appropriate, but this is, as a starting point, this is, this is how it reads. "The applicant shall remove the proposed stormwater infrastructure that includes piping of the stream corridor, Braeburn Creek, in the southwest corner of the subject property. Any impacts proposed activity or uses within the protected conservation area of the stream, including the applicant's proposed wastewater line crossing and any new stormwater facilities, shall comply with the applicable water resource overlay standards at EC 9.4900 through 9.4980, or otherwise in effect at the time of future permit application." And so the second portion of that condition about the water resource overlay, I think, would actually be consistent with the goalpost ruling and, you know, in the event that current code standards apply at the time of that application. As I've said before, I think there are other ways, other stormwater facilities that would enable service to the full development irrespective of any irrigation issues or how that water might be used.
Commissioner Jaworski, and then Commissioner Borowski. Sorry, did you have a follow-up?
I just wanted to point out, or not, what Gabe pointed out, what the planning commission's realized is that's, in some ways, potentially inconsistent with how the goalpost rule may come out. It's not consistent with what the city attorney's position is, but as we are now, it's not resolved. So we would probably want to restructure that so that we're consistent.
What we could do, and I'd propose that we come back at your next deliberation meeting with a refined version of that that anticipates a kind of a range of outcomes. It need not be so specific about the water resource overlay, I think, but I think the thrust of it would be to have the applicant remove that component of their infrastructure and impact shown on the plans. So we can come back and review that on Monday if that's the Commission's preference.
Okay. Commissioner Jaworski, and then Commissioner Borowski.
Yeah, I understand the proposed condition. When you say shall remove, does that mean we're saying that the hearings official's number five should be removed?
Well, I think that what we're talking about would be a condition that modifies the hearings official's decision and replaces Condition Five.
Replaces Condition Five?
Yeah.
Then my other, my second part of that, that's what I thought, but my, is that Condition Five talks about the issue of irrigation, and the appeal was on irrigation in other lands and the impact on, could be on vegetation. This doesn't address that at all, and I guess my question is, when someone develops a site and has specifics for that site, does it matter if you irrigate that site, or they irrigated the world for all that matters? I mean, what is really here that it's not legal to do that, or he shouldn't do that? I mean, I'm not clear on that.
So the condition that was imposed by the hearings officer said, if you're going to be doing this, you need to get all the required permits. So you'd have to get the permits, and you'd have to determine in the context of those permits what the extent of your usage is. That's
So for example, they may need to go to the state to obtain a water right and a permit to take that water. There'd be potentially some permits outside the city's jurisdiction that they'd need to accommodate that, but going back to, I think, my understanding of your concern about the mention of irrigation in the appeal issue itself, I see the appeal issue as really more focused on the piping of the stream and the effect of that piping in terms of unnecessary vegetation removal, regardless of how the water is used.
Okay, well, I'm asking specifically how it's used, because the second line says to irrigate other parts of the cemetery, which creates more of a need for removal, which I talked about in capacity. If the capacity needs of 172 units, you know, you add the capacity of acres and acres of, you know, that might change how this particular thing is engineered or designed, or how much volume they need. I don't see that being addressed, is what I'm asking.
Yeah, and I would just refer back to my previous comment, that I don't think we have enough evidence to really decide or determine how much water would be used for irrigation or where. We just don't know.
Okay, my question, you know, on the latter part, the, I'm sorry, the where, is there anything legally says that he can't use it on other parts of the cemetery? I'll be even more specific.
Not that I'm aware of.
Not that you're aware of. Okay, thank you.
So, and I'm just going to ask a quick question to follow up with Commissioner Jaworski that might help to clarify things, is by removing that condition, it doesn't necessarily preclude the applicant from irrigating the property, it just, yes.
It may be, you know, I'm not an engineer, but it may be a feasible option to pump some of that water without piping the whole stream segment. I, you know, I just don't know, but it's speculation based on the lack of evidence at this point.
And once again, it goes back to the criteria, the criterion that we're really talking about vegetation. Commissioner Borowski.
Yes, my question would be, under staff's proposed condition of approval, this, this section that says, okay, so if, if the applicant comes and puts in a building proposal and says, "I want to pipe 200 feet of this," and the city says, "No, we don't think that works because of the, you're taking too much vegetation and that water resource overlay standard applies," and you deny it, then that gets me back to the, that you cannot put a standard and approval in there to deny something that's been approved, correct, Dan?
Yeah, well, so when, when the time comes, hopefully we'll have it resolved some other way, but that will be probably an argument, is like, does it just preclude that item? Or are you just talking about that you can't do something that kills the development?
So in other words
Results in a denial of the development.
Exactly. There may be other means, though, for the applicant to accommodate stormwater runoff in light of a denial under Goal Five in such a way that it allows the project to move forward. So that would, we're speculating about a future process, but I think it's important to think about those, you know, potential conflicts, and so that's why I think I agree with Commissioner Baker and why we're sort of prompting a discussion to hopefully resolve that issue upfront if we can.
So inform me about the process for appeal of that. How is it going, boots on the ground, how is this going to work? He comes and says, "I want to pipe 200 feet."
Right.
You say, "We think you only need to pipe 100 feet."
Well
Then, and he says, "I think mine is right, you think yours is right." What is the process to resolve that?
Sure. Well, so based on the goalpost ruling, at least at this point, and if we assume that the water resource overlay standards do apply, that proposal would be subject to a type-two land use application. So, you know, they would have to show that they comply with the standards in the water resource overlay. They would also have to show that it's an allowed use within the conservation area, and I think, based on my cursory review of those standards, the piping of the stream would not even be an allowed use. So it may be that we end up in a process, a public process, discussing or deciding whether to approve or deny that request. I can't really speculate on, you know, the length of a pipe or whether there'd be a preference for a shorter length or a longer length, but I do think that the piping of the stream corridor itself is not an allowed use.
Okay. For me, it just seems that a lot of this is moot, because I think with our first action, we killed this project, so.
So I'm going to put myself in the queue, and then Commissioner Baker and Commissioner Jaworski. Hopefully I got that order right. I, just where I sit right now I, just where I sit right now, I'm a little, I'm uncomfortable with the condition of approval, as staff's proposed condition of approval, for the same reasons that you both identified. We need to rework it to, because I think it makes an assumption about the goalposts rule that really we can't do at this point. So I also do think that because of the conceptual nature of the proposal, there just is not enough information to actually have such a finite condition. There's not a fully developed stormwater analysis of the site, et cetera, et cetera. It's, it's kind of, in some ways, cart before the horse, quite frankly, in terms of how they address the application. So that's my opinion. Commissioner Baker.
I was just going to make a motion that we find that the appeal issue... We find that the opponent, Appeal Issue Number 4, find in favor of Opponent Appeal Issue 4, and my only concern is that, the concern is not really the piping, I mean, not the, not the irrigation.
Can you state your motion before you...
Well, I'm trying to figure out how would, how would I make this, what would the, maybe I would ask staff, what would be in a motion to say that we were finding in favor of Appeal Issue 4?
Can...
Because of the way the wording of this thing is here.
Give it a try. One option would be to find that the hearing's official erred in establishing Condition of Approval Number 5.
Okay.
And to find that that would violate the criterion at 9.724, subsection 2B1, in regards to unnecessary vegetation removal.
Okay.
And that you could direct staff to bring back a proposed condition that is revised to take out reference to the Goal 5 regulations, but indeed to require that the proposed piping of the full stream segment is precluded.
Yes. You can see why I was confused because I just didn't know how we're supposed to vote in favor of Appeal Issue Number 4 and then go into the hearing's official, so.
I want to make sure, if you are going to make a motion, let's be clear about what the motion is.
Well, that's why I'm...
So if you like that, then maybe have them repeat it because they were taking notes.
Yeah, I'd like that. If you could repeat it, maybe briefer or whatever.
Okay. That you would move to find that the hearing's official erred in establishing Condition of Approval Number 5.
The Number 4, well, it's 4. Well, it's Appeal Issue Number 4, it's, oh, sorry. Sorry, Commissioner, sorry.
That's a good question. So state it again, Gabe, maybe start over.
Okay. That you could find that the hearing's official erred in establishing Condition of Approval Number 5, and that that it would violate the approval criterion at EC 9.724, subsection 2B1, in regards to unnecessary vegetation removal, and that you would direct staff to bring back a proposed condition that would preclude piping of the stream segment, but remove reference to application of the Goal 5 water resource overlay regulations.
Wait, wait a minute. Commissioner Baker is making a motion right now, and I'm not quite sure, where are you on this? Commissioner Baker, are you paying attention?
I was just, I was looking at the wording in the cup to make sure that, to be more, yeah. Yes, that sounds like a good motion.
Okay. Does anybody want to second that motion?
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay. Second for discussion. Discussion, Commissioner Jaworski.
Yes, of legal. If I understand, 7.241B1, if it doesn't meet that requirement, doesn't it mean that the application should be denied?
Okay. Since you've been doing this.
Could you repeat the question?
If it doesn't meet EC 7.274, 9.724B1, doesn't that mean that the application should then be denied because it doesn't meet the criteria?
That would be one option, is to reverse the hearing's official's decision entirely on that point. What we're suggesting is a modification that would carry forward the approval of the CIR project, but to remove this element of the plan. So it is at the commission's discretion, it's one of your options, that if you found that the proposal actually violated that criterion, you could choose to reverse the decision on that basis.
Okay. Or modify, what I don't understand is by saying that he erred in that place, and then you're saying that that's...
Right.
That's not needed. How do they handle then piping and pumping of stormwater? How do they handle their stormwater issue? I don't understand that. That's where I'm confused.
Well, what it would, what it would do is it would preclude a full piping of the stream segment, but it would not remove a variety of other options that they might have, for example, to provide a stormwater treatment facility and an outfall to the stream corridor, you know, as part of the permitting process would have to show the effect of that, you know, runoff into the stream corridor, but it would be an open stream and not a piped one.
Okay. So this would not deny the application, it would just remove that method of addressing that issue, but it would allow for other methods to address it by the applicant?
Correct.
Thank you.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, you actually repeated that condition three times very consistently, is that actually in removing that approval cri, the condition of approval, it doesn't mean, correct me if I'm wrong, if it wasn't unnecessary removal of vegetation, that that was, whatever standards are applied, needed, and it was necessary for stormwater, it doesn't preclude the piping of that area or the full length. By removing the condition of approval, it's, we're supplementing it, that includes piping in the southwest, oh, we do. So actually, if we can, so I'm going to answer my own question. So you remove it, so it's no longer an option. Because I guess my concern is that, what if it is the, what if it is the only option, and really we're talking about vegetation right now, so you're not removing unnecessary vegetation, but a portion of it needs to be piped? We just don't have enough information about the stormwater.
I think the answer to that is, you don't have enough information, the way this is going to play out, the CUP is so, for lack of a better word, vague, and so a lot of the details are going to be hammered out later. So if there was a requirement, a condition of approval that said thou shalt be able to do that, you couldn't change that later.
Right.
But I think you're right. I mean, I think that because this is so vague, there's going to be, things are going to change. And if they can get approval for something outside of this process, that's how they're going to have to be doing that stuff.
Any other, yes?
Yeah.
Commissioner Jaworski.
I'm, I'm in support of the motion because, and maybe my understanding is wrong, is because if this is written as it is, and say they may capture it that way, then from what I understand, the city can't change that if that's a condition that states how it is to be done. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's some, it's some version of being vested.
Yeah.
For lack of a better word.
Commissioner Baker.
Yeah, I wanted to comment, too, that really there's three options. One is, don't make any changes. Two, remove this. Or third, make it just the opposite. They may not, you know, they may not remove excess vacant vegetation and put the stream under, you know, put the, put the stream through a pipe. So we're using the middle ground, so to speak, in our finding.
Any other discussions on this motion? Well, I'm going to, I, I'm not opposed to the entire motion. I am uncomfortable with, "The applicant shall remove the proposed stormwater infrastructure that includes piping of the stream corridor in the southwest corner of the subject property." Because of the fact that if it is a necessary, when we get to the stormwater design at permitting, and it's a necessary component, whether it's five feet, 10 feet, that the way I read this condition is that it's not going to be allowed. And I'm not sure there's enough information for us to not allow that. And really, my, I'm looking at the criterion, and the criterion says unnecessary vegetation. So there's my comment. Commissioner Jaworski.
I second the motion. I didn't understand it to include the staff recommended proposal condition. I thought that the motion was basically that the piping of Burke Creek and the capture and piping, et cetera, you know, is unnecessarily removes natural vegetation. That's what I thought the motion was.
The last part of my suggested motion was that we come back to you with a revised condition of approval on Monday, and so...
But not that we were adopting this.
Correct. Correct. This is not the final version.
Yeah, that's perfect.
And what we intend to do is take out reference to the Goal 5 provisions, but...
I heard that.
Attempt to address the concerns we're hearing today.
Perfect.
Reword it, and, and on Monday, we can continue to wordsmith or refine it to the commission's preference.
Okay, great. That's very clear because when the motion was stated, you specifically had said water overlay standards. So I just, I, before we move to a vote, let's have a discussion now, if there are any comments about the condition, so staff will have some understanding. So let's have a discussion about the condition itself, since it's part of the motion. And if you don't have any comments...
What's part of the motion, Doc? Excuse me, what is part of the motion?
They're going to come back with a condition. So right now, if they're going to come back with a condition, it's part of the motion, what are they coming back with?
Well, but really, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Commissioner Borowski.
Thank you. I won't be able to support this motion because I don't know what those conditions are. I can't vote on something without knowing what the conditions are going to be.
That's valid. Yeah, well, you know, you started the motion. Once again, I'm not totally up on my Robert's Rule of Order. We could do a friendly amendment. Commissioner Borowski, or we can separate it, but, or we can just let it fail. Commissioner Jaworski.
For a friendly amendment, I would say, since the motion was very short, three lines, I would say that...
Motion was...
Three lines, taken out of Appeal Issue 4 virtually. I would say that if the, if Commissioner Baker would amend his motion to indicate that the motion to do that is subject to approval by the commission of the conditions to be brought at a later date.
So accepted.
And that was what staff assumed, is that we would not be deciding on the final language of a condition of approval, but the direction is to bring back a recommended
Perfect.
Condition. You would then have the opportunity to discuss it, potentially change it, and choose to adopt that condition or not.
Perfect. Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
That's good. And Commissioner Baker, it's, you have to agree or disagree?
I accepted the...
You accept it? Okay. Any further discussion? So do we want to, is, do we need to restate the motion? Do you want to say it again? For clarity, for Commissioner Borowski?
Let's see if I can do this for memory.
For like the fifth time?
Okay. The Planning Commission finds that the hearing's official erred in establishing Condition of Approval Number 5, and that it would violate the approval criterion at 9.724, subsection 2B1, in regards to unnecessary vegetation removal. The Planning Commission directs staff to bring back revised proposed Condition of Approval that would preclude piping of the full stream segment of Brayburn Creek as proposed, and that condition would be subject to further review and approval by the Planning Commission at its next deliberation meeting.
Okay. Further discussion? Okay, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Those opposed? The vote is three to one. Three in favor, one opposed.
Would you like me to read? Appeal Issue Number 5, and this is the last in the order of the opponent's appeal issues. "The application is too vague for approval. The commission should hold the hearing's official erred in approving the application, given the overall vagueness and uncertainties of the application, and deny the application."
Commissioner Jaworski.
It is my indication that although the application in itself is vague, when they come in for permits, it'll have to be much more specific at that time.
Correct.
And if it triggers a land use PUT, then the, then the public would get involved in reviewing that. Is that correct?
If it, if it, what did you say? If it triggers a PUT?
If it triggers, I guess, a land use...
Yeah, so, yeah. The question's really going to be, is there going to be discretion involved in issuing those building permits? And if there is, which there most likely will be, it will qualify as a land use decision.
And then the public can be involved.
Correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Baker.
Yeah, that was my concern. How would the, given the vagueness of this proposal, how would the public be able to comment later on when it, when it is more flushed out? And you're saying that it's from the discretionary nature of some of these issues?
Yeah. So in my memo today, and I doubt you've had a chance to read it all, but I think one of the points that the city attorney made in, in her initial analysis of the goalpost ruling is that, yes, the, the application, you know, the applicant has been clear that it's intentionally very conceptual, and that to the extent they did not address specific development standards in the 2002 code, under the goalpost rule, according to the city's interpretation, that opens up the project to being subject to more current code standards. In deciding what standards apply, whether they would cause the application to be denied and should not be applied, or, and in some cases, for example, if a traffic impact analysis were triggered, there would indeed be a land use decision involved, and we would have to follow, at a minimum, the statutory requirements for public notice and appeal opportunity.
Commissioner Jaworski.
Really stepping forward, because what we do here, if the applicant slash appellant appeals our first decision on the goalpost, and that comes back again, does that affect our other decisions that we made on the five of the other appellant? Or can we look at them again under a new light since review of that won't be capable of being done?
Probably would be precluded from looking at them again.
Mm-hmm. But we would have a chance to discuss again if appeal was granted and kicked back to, to look at the goalpost rule?
Yeah, it kind of, it depends what Luba does, what they say.
Yeah. I think it also depends on whether or not the opponent's appeal, and they preserve their ability to, to raise those issues if their appeal were to cause a remand.
Okay.
So that could happen on both, on both counts.
Any other comments? Commissioner Baker.
Yeah, I was just going to note, based upon the CIR CUP requirements, the vegetation requirement would still apply. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Whether or not the goalpost rule, the vegetation requirement would still apply.
It's the, it's the criteria for evaluation for the CIR CUP at the time of Seminole 2002. Is that correct, staff?
Yep.
That's correct. So it's, it's really, I think we're all in agreement and solid on the, that criterion is a basis for approval of the CUP. It's not subject to a goalpost rule.
Right. That's why I wanted to clarify.
Result of that.
So it wouldn't be affected by the goalpost rule theoretically, then? Right.
Commissioner Borowski.
I'd like to move that the hearing's official did not err on Appeal Issue Number 5, that the application is too vague for approval. To me, that the, the appeal is too vague for me to rule on it. Just to say that it's vague, and you have to, you have to, you have to deny the, the approval of the, the CIR.
Okay.
I can't deal with it.
So does anybody want to second Commissioner Borowski's motion?
I'll second it. I'll second it with the understanding, as I understand it now, that it'll become much more specific in the permitting process.
Discussion. I did want to, I'm not sure this is the right time, but I just wanted, for the record, is that there, it's interesting, there is, I think... is that there, it's interesting, there is, I think, Gabe, you stated it really well at the hearing, and it's actually embedded in the history of the adoption of the CIR criteria, is that there is an element of flexibility. I have, some of these conditions that are adopted by the hearings official, I'm challenged by, that actually, like, for instance, so I'm just, and I, like I said, I'm not sure this is the time, but I just want to express some concern, and maybe it's a follow-up item if we do want to this time or next time, or I'm willing to drop it. Condition number two, for instance, here, except for the limitation of not more than 172 total units in the development impact area described in these conditions of approval, the site plan is conceptual in nature, is not binding, and the actual development may differ. So, highlight, actual development may differ. The timing, size, mix of units, and number, location, and development to be included in each phase, and all other matters pertaining to development of the approved CIR CUP are to be determined by the applicant. It's really, the language, I understand where he is trying to go, yet the inclusion of all other matters, and there's some, some parts and pieces of this really go back to the criteria, and the way he's written it, I just wish he had said, as long as it's consistent with the criteria, but there's some really general language in here. Maybe that's embedded within it.
So, just as a point of clarification, this language was proposed by the applicant and carried through into the hearings official's decision. I don't know that it was grounded in any particular or specific condition of approval, but I do think that, on the one hand, it's, it's helpful to clarify what the approval is and is not.
Right.
But to your question and point about, is this the appropriate time? We have another half hour at today's meeting. We've moved through most of the appeal issues, and so, in any event, if commissioners have other concerns with regard to the hearings official's decision, you know, that, that relate to the appeals, you would have the opportunity, potentially, to revise some of that language.
Okay.
So, go ahead.
Yeah. With regard to this, there was no appeal, unless you can tie this to.
Unless, that makes sense.
Can't go off and start making assumptions.
Yeah, okay, perfect.
But what Gabe just said is, you know, if you want to provide more detail on something, I just want to point out that Gabe had mentioned really early on about supplemental findings that we think will be necessary to address, like, public works referral comments that are contradictory.
Yes.
So I think there needs to be supplemental findings, and we can come back and draft those. I just wanted to make that.
Okay, that's a good point. Okay, thank you.
If I may, if I may follow up, just in terms of the condition of approval, and I only raise this as a question perhaps for the city's legal counsel, but under the final appeal issue with regard to the vagueness of the application, I do see potentially, and it's worth exploring, whether or not there's a connection here, and that, you know, I think your point is that the condition is rather broad and vague in terms of how it might differ, the discretion it gives to the applicant, and if we wanted to revise or sort of refine that language to be more clear, there might be a connection to appeal issue number five.
Okay. So for now, based on what you've said, I think commissioners, I'd like to table my, I just wanted to bring it up at this time in case it was relevant. I think really it isn't relevant right now, so we can, I don't have any more to say on this particular motion. Commissioner Jaworski, and then Commissioner Baker.
Yeah, although we're off the initial motion, I want to tell staff that I support what the Chair Taylor, Commissioner Taylor, has, has mentioned. I think it relates, because no matter what we do with number five, besides saying it was vague, there are uncertainties of the application. And I know we've gotten into all kinds of discussion on the definition of what words mean. Now, to that, to me, that means the uncertainty of where it's going, and I think that the hearings official's recommendation or, or condition of number two creates that uncertainty, and I, and I think it can be addressed, and I think there should be links like that. I would suggest that if there are any commissioners that have any concerns with other hearings officials' recommendations or conditions, that maybe they let staff know, and that could be brought up at our secondary meeting.
That's a good, it's a good suggestion. So if I, if we can, it's a great suggestion, let's, let's delay the rest of the discussion about the conditions until after we finish with this motion. Thank you. Commissioner Baker.
Well, I felt that there was a connection between some of the language here and appeal issue five, so I, I would, was going to suggest that we approve, we, we, tonight, appeal issue five, or approve the motion with a amendment that we should come back and look at the language in a couple of these conditions to remove some of the vagueness. So we, we deal with it that way.
So is that suggested friendly amendment for Commissioner Borowski? Commissioner Baker, is that a friendly amendment?
Yes, a friendly amendment.
Okay.
No, I won't accept it.
Okay. It's not accepted.
We can do a substitute motion, and we can vote on that.
Well, you may make a substitute motion.
That would be the procedure to, to follow, if that's the direction you'd like to go.
Could we restate the motion, because we've got?
Yeah, that's a good point. Can you restate the motion?
Yeah, the motion was that, that the hearings official did not air on appeal issue five as to the vagueness of the approval.
So Dwight, do we have to vote on that motion?
I just want to make something clear.
Yes.
Let's look at the, the appeal issue itself.
Yeah.
It's not the vagueness of the application, of the approval, it's the application is too vague. So they're talking about how conceptual the applica, that's, that's how I read it. So I just want, it's different when you're talking about, is the decision vague or is the application vague?
Right.
Right, right. And it's just the application.
And I think what the, the appellant is, is getting to is that site plan is, you know, could be this, could be that, and that's the vagueness that is being referred to in this appeal issue, not the hearings official's conditions of approval.
Commissioner Baker, and then Commissioner Borowski.
So I, I want to clarify, so even if we approve the current motion, we could still come back and change the wording in these conditions?
That, that's what I suggested earlier, Commissioner Baker, so.
But I kept saying the, the.
I have a problem with that.
Okay.
And that is because you're stuck with the, the appeal issues. If someone raises an appeal and they, they don't appeal something else, just because you think that was a problem, you can't address it. You need to be.
But it needs to be connected to that appeal issue.
Focus on the appeal issues.
Mm-hmm.
And so that's why I wanted to be clear what, what this appeal number five is talking about.
So to Commissioner Baker's suggestion, and if there is an interest in revising any of these conditions of approval, I'd advise you to couch that discussion in the basis of the criteria and the decision itself. Well, and, and the appeal issues. So you're going to need to find a way to connect the proposed revision and provide a rationale as to how it, how it fits within the appeal issues raised.
Yes, I'm, I'm going to throw this out there, you give me some feedback. So in some ways, it, it might be important for us to have this discussion now because it could change the direction of the motion. Obviously, we already have other motions passed, so if we want to look at the conditions as they relate to the prior appeal items, we will have to be consistent with our prior motions.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so I think we, let's leave the discussion open, then, for the conditions of approval, and continue the discussion, unless I've misunderstood something. Commissioner Baker.
Well, again, I, I feel, although the, the, the appeal issue is on the application, our response is that the hearings official responded to that vague application and left too much vagueness in their conditions in a few places, and, or, that's my concern. And I, I think that is a tie. It's a legitimate tie in that the hearings official made their conditions of approval based on the application, and, and in this case, some of them are a little excessive. That's why I would tie, you know, we, we, we agree that the applica, you know, we could, I don't know how to word the motion, a new motion that would state that, so maybe staff or legal could help us, but that's what I would be in favor of.
So I'll put myself in the queue. This is kind of where I'm challenged, too. I might need some assistance from the two of you, is that, how to tie it. So here's the next part of this. It's interesting, condition number two, it's somewhat contradicted in some of the other conditions that specifically talk about a 10%, that the development has to happen within.
Seven years.
Seven years.
No, 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 not that one. Oh, if you guys can tell me which one it is. It's the 10% expansion beyond the.
Related to tree preservation.
Yeah. So really, my point is, there's several other conditions that really talk about the area and confine the area, but then here, you've got a condition saying, guess what? Actual development may differ. So it's, yeah.
Well, the way staff would normally read that in the context of implementing these conditions of approval is that where there's something more specific, it would prevail over the more general.
Yeah.
And so I would think that the, you know, the allowance for, you know, adjusting the tree preservation boundary by 10%, if that's what it reads, you know, that, that would prevail over some more general statement in, like, condition number two, in terms of their ability to, to have flexibility. So there are certain aspects of the conditions that are specific and lock in certain elements, and, and those would need to be adhered to.
Mm-hmm.
And that, taken together, we would ensure, to the best of our ability, that all of the conditions are met and, and not conflicting to the point where one becomes meaningless or, or mooted.
Yeah. So let me go back to the, the other question is, because I'm not, I'm not necessarily tied to this, because I'm not sure I personally am right now able to get there. How do we, I mean, for instance, number two, the only thing I would add is as long, and it's, as long as it's consistent with the criteria and applicable standards at the time of building permits to middle, I mean, we have to keep it, because we're not sure what that's going to be, a building permits to middle, and maybe it's inherent in this. So maybe it's not even needed, and my issue at least is moot. I'm not sure how to tie it, or even, like I said, if it's relevant. Any thoughts?
I mean, I think that determination's really up to you. I think if, if, just to kind of reemphasize the, the point that if, that if you or other commissioners want to make revisions to the conditions of approval, what might be helpful is to actually have you craft what those revisions look like, and, and to be clear at our next meeting what the relationship is, or at least make, make a case for the rationale as to how it falls within the scope of the appeal issues raised. And so we can take that issue up or specific changes to the conditions on Monday, but we'll be cautioning you along the way as to the need for that, to fall within the scope of the appeal, or appeals.
Okay, thank you. That answers my question. Commissioner Jaworski, and then Commissioner Baker.
Yeah, on, on the hearings official's condition number one, I just want to know if this is, is this standard, or did he set something specific that usually when you have an application approved, that you have seven years to apply for the permit?
No, the, the code does allow the hearings official discretion to grant a time schedule, a phasing schedule, beyond what is typical or required normally for a conditional use permit, which is an expiration period of only one year. And so given the applicant's, this is, again, this is applicant's proposed condition, which provides the seven-year increment, and he adopted the applicant's request. So he does have the discretion under the code for the conditional use permit process to establish a longer phasing schedule.
Was there testimony at the hearings official about the need for housing and the immediate need for that, that he didn't hear? I'm confused, because we heard it at our public hearing. In the record, did he, did that same test, kind of testimony be presented to him?
I think in general, it's safe to say that, yeah, the topic come, came up. I can't point, you know, off the top of my head, a specific testimony.
Yeah, I had concerns about that one as well, because this is a project that's, hasn't progressed since 2004, and, I mean, normally, when you get land use appeals, land use proposals, I think they're good for like three years typically, is it, maybe cup is one, but, and then, and then you can renew it if you want to. Is that, is that my understanding or not?
Well, under current code, and based on my recollection, yeah, the, the applicant, if they're approaching the expiration period, has the ability to file for a timeline extension. Not subject to a land use decision, but it is possible to extend those timelines and to do so, I think, more than once. There may be limitations on the total number of extensions under current code. The old code is, is, is much less specific about that and the process, you know, or the parameters for requesting a longer phasing schedule. What I would point out is, just a matter of fact, that staff proposed a, an alternative condition that would have granted them a total of 10 years to complete the full project. Hearings official declined to take up that condition of approval. In any event, the, you know, if the commission wanted to look at that, or to look at revising this condition in any particular way, you'd have to find a basis under the appeal to, to do so, and I'm not sure there is one, where there might be a connection with regard to the flexibility or vagueness of number two. I'm not sure there is one for, for number one.
Commissioner Borowski, do you still have a comment?
Well, after hearing that, I, what I was going to say probably is moot, but I think that was explained fairly eloquent, eloquently by Richie Wyman, you know, that these projects, to get them built, doesn't happen in a, in a short period of time, you know, and it would require phasing. Whether that is a seven years or not, I think that the hearings official felt that seven years was, was plenty, but it doesn't mean that he has to take all seven years. But the fact to get 172 units of affordable housing built is a time-consuming thing, just with the amount of state income tax credits and those types of things. I guess that what I would like to get back to is appeal issue five, and the, the statement that the application is too vague for approval, the commission should hold that the hearings official aired in approving the application, given the overall vagueness and uncertainties of the application, and deny the application. The motion on the table is that that is, that the, that the hearings official did not air, and we will not deny the application.
Yeah, and right now, we're in discussion.
Mm-hmm. I just restated it.
Okay, great. Commissioner Baker.
Yeah, I wanted to point out, I had some concerns about another one. We've talked about one, two, and one, but I had concerns about 13 because of other condi, other, from, because of the record, there were, there was tree cutting in, on, there's, there's detailed information in the record from the Urban Forester about issues.
So I think, I mean, just in, in general, I think, you know, this isn't a, it's, I don't think you can really get at everything through appeal issue number five. So let's focus on addressing that, and.
Thank you.
Well, my concern is that this is vague. This response is vague.
I know, but the, the appeal issue is that the application is too conceptual to even, I think that's what you need to focus on.
Yeah.
That's what the issue is.
Yeah. Commissioner Jaworski.
On the same condition of approval that Commissioner Baker indicated, I got a little confused, maybe you can clear my head. I thought that when they came in to the hearings official, that they had to go on the record of the things that was presented and denied in 2002. How were they able to commit a 20, June 29, 2016 site plan and enter that into the record, which is new?
Well, they're, they're not limited to the evidence submitted at the time of completeness review or prior to that, so we, as, as is appropriate and legally correct, through the CUP procedures, the record was held open up to and through the public. held open up to and through the public hearing and allowed the applicant to submit additional information, additional evidence, and revised plans, up to the point that the record closed just as other parties had that same opportunity.
Okay.
So we did get updated site plans along the way, and the one that I provided with you at the hearing is a reflection of the most recent one we have.
So that was allowed to update all of that?
Yes, most definitely.
Commissioner Baker.
So we directed staff to come back to us with a revision for Appeal Issue Number Four that deals with vegetation. And I can't understand why the wording in 13 couldn't also be addressed under that same...
So can I make a recommendation? Because then we're stepping back to a different appeal issue. If there are specific conditions that we want to look at that are directly tied to an appeal issue, that we talk about it after, unless it's directly related to this appeal issue, let's talk about that afterwards. And once again, just really understanding counsel is that we can only, which complicates it obviously, is that we can only respond to the appeal issues in front of us. We need to tie it.
I appreciate that. And one thing, just to quickly respond to Commissioner Baker on that point, when I look at Appeal Issue Number Four, it has to do with the relationship between piping the creek and the vegetation removal that would be associated with that, not necessarily throughout the entire site. And therefore, I don't see the connection of those other conditions of approval relating under Appeal Issue Number Four.
Commissioner Baker.
Yeah, my concern, the reason that I think they are related is because the, for the areas that are not supposed to be removed, there's no requirement for fencing for protection of the trees that have been set aside for... And that's been a concern of the Urban Forester from the earlier tree cutting. That didn't happen, and a lot of additional trees were damaged or had to be damaged. So I don't see that, you know, as part of that. That's why I think they're related.
Well, give me a moment. I do believe that there is a requirement for protective fencing.
Yes.
Says clearly marked with flagging stakes or other invisible means. It doesn't say fencing. And if you read the Urban Forester report, that's very specific about the requirements that they like to see. And since this would be in lieu of those requirements, that's why I'm concerned.
So I'd encourage you to look at Condition Number Fifteen. That might help answer it. I don't know that it's explicit about fencing, but it does require certified arborists to provide a report on the proposed impacts to existing trees in the inventory, including a critical root zone analysis for the trees along the boundary of the impact. The arborist shall include a proposed protection measures for trees within the 20-foot area along the boundary. The arborist shall also implement any protection measure needed to ensure the survival of trees on adjacent property where the development impact area butts the property line, and that was in regards to the west property line. So while we weren't explicit about fencing, we do have a requirement here for a certified arborist to employ those protection measures at their professional discretion.
So once again, can I just ask us to wait to further, if you have more discussion, to wait until after we finish this? Commissioner Jaworski.
Yeah, I second this motion, but I'm confused that if we vote on this motion and we approve of it, we cannot look at the other considerations that staff might have and their relevance. Is that correct?
Unless you can tie it into, you know, an appeal issue. I don't...
Yeah, but if we've already said that he did an error, let's say, which is the motion, if we do that, then we can't go back and look at...
Well, maybe what you should do is figure out what Appeal Issue Number Five says first. And if you agree that it provides, go and look at the issue that you think is vague, then...
So if I may add to that, a number of the conditions of approval were actually proposed by the applicant. And so I think there is an argument that could be made that the applicant's proposed conditions that were carried through in the hearings official's decision were actually part of the application. And so I'm just offering a way to connect the issues to, the concerns you may have about particular conditions to Appeal Issue Number Five. So in other words, if it's a condition that was actually proposed by the applicant and is part of the application, and it's too vague, that maybe gives you a basis under Appeal Issue Number Five to bring it up on Monday.
Yeah, well, my question was more specific. I agree with that. My question is, is if we say he did not err on Number Five, we can't bring them up. So I'm thinking that we should not vote on Number Five, maybe stress the conditions that you could come back on Monday and say, this can or cannot be related. There's only two or three we want to look at, and then we could vote on Number Five.
Yeah, I guess, can I put myself in the queue unless you is... I guess that's, can we split, I mean, the appeal issue is quite specific.
Yes. That's why I was suggesting that you sit, maybe sit down, take two minutes, read the appeal issue, and then as a body, figure out what the scope of that is.
So I'm just going to read it out loud. So the actual appeal issue is the application is too vague for approval. The commission should hold that the hearings official erred in approving the application, given the overall vagueness and uncertainties of the application, and deny the application. Commissioner Baker.
Well, the hearings official made a long list of conditions, and I assume that they were in response to the vagueness of the application. In other words, if the application wasn't vague, then these conditions didn't need to be made. I mean, that's the way I interpret it. You know, if the application was clear, you know, there would be no reason to put conditions on it. But he put a whole series of conditions because the application was...
So let me just throw in what the risks are. So if you tried to make that tie-in and the applicant doesn't agree with it, they appeal it to Luba, and they basically say, you know, under the code, the planning commission only has the authority to address issues that are raised in an appeal, and they went way off and addressed all these other issues that were not appealed, that could come back.
Yeah, Commissioner Borowski.
And I think that that's what I stated when I first made the motion and made my argument, was that the appeal issue is too vague for me to vote for it because it's just saying, it's vague, reject it. And to me, appeal issues need to be specific so I can say yes or no. To say that the application was vague and because it was vague, it needs to go away, it isn't enough for me to say that the hearings official erred.
Commissioner Jaworski.
Yeah, I didn't look at vagueness. I looked at uncertainties. And when you have something predicated on nothing can happen unless another cup is approved to change the initial 1995, to me, that's uncertainty. And so I think there is an issue of uncertainty here. Whether or not that's enough to deny the application, I don't know, but I think that's enough to open up some of the conditions that were imposed that might make things more certain.
You know, I'm wanting to honor the fact that we've been in these seats. It's almost 2:00. I know we're like mid-motion, but does anybody need a break? I just want to honor that. We've been sitting for quite a while. Yes.
From what I heard staff say, that if we vote on this, we can't open up any of the other conditions imposed by the hearings official. So I think, is anyone really wanting to look at some issues? I know you said two, and Commissioner Baker said 13 or something. Is it that critical that maybe we should wait until Monday and have it looked at? Or are they not that critical to you that we can actually vote on this motion, which may preclude looking at those?
That's a good question. Commissioner Borowski, and then I'm going to get back to your question.
And again, the only concern that I would have about that is if we're punting this till Monday, that doesn't really give staff an opportunity to bring forward the changes, and I will not be able to be at any other subsequent meetings. So it has to get done by Monday, and the eighth is the 120 days. So for me, make the decision on the appeal issue. If the appeal issue is upheld, then we give directions to staff as to how we want the findings to be reflected, in my opinion.
And I want to clarify, I'm just checking in. I'm not thinking you're going to take off for 35 minutes. It's just if you need to go to the restroom. So it sounds like you might not need to. So we'll just keep going. So, okay, Commissioner Jaworski.
Yeah, so based on what Commissioner Borowski brought up, I have a question of staff in that if, in fact, we cannot conclude this by the eighth, number one, do all the things that we did do go forward and the thing that we didn't, the only thing that's resolved? Or does it impact everything?
Well, we need a final local decision and a final order signed by the planning commission chair no later than September 8th in order to meet the 120-day rule. So I do share some of the concerns expressed by Commissioner Borowski as to our ability to meet that timeline. I mean, it would be ideal for us to have votes on all the appeal issues today and enough clarity that I can begin to draft a final order and propose revised condition related to the stream corridor. And our hope would be to get final action on Monday, if at all possible.
That's my preference too. But my question is, if we only address four of the five and the first appeal, and we've done that in a correct manner, how does that affect our overall look at the appeals? Or does the only thing left hanging is number, appeal number five of the second appellant? The rest of our, we did make decisions on and clarify. So the only thing unclarified might be number five. So that's what I'm asking.
Well, maybe if I restate it this way, are you, in some cases in the past, the planning commission has taken preliminary votes on each appeal issue, but then typically we'll come back for a final vote on the overall decision. So I guess, is that the question?
No, the question is, is wherever this goes and it's sent, you say the commission met. This is their decision on appellant one. This is their decision on appellant two, one, two, three, four. They did not make or reach a decision on appeal item number five. What happens?
You may end up with a writ of mandamus in circuit court. And in other words, if we did not make a final local decision, it was an incomplete decision, then that would be a procedural error, and I would hope we can avoid that.
And then that would go somewhere else to take a look at, which would give us more time to make a decision then?
No, you have, I mean, I'll just say, you just have to, you have to address all the appeal issues.
I think we're not there yet, too. We have some time.
There will be no final decision unless you address all the appeal issues.
Yeah. Yeah. So let's, since no restroom breaks are needed by this group and staff, okay? We're still on the appeal issue number five. Got a motion on the table. Commissioner Jaworski.
I'd like to ask those commissioners that had a question of some of the other conditions, if that is really relevant to them, to where they want to proceed that further? Or are they saying that they're willing to vote on number five either way that it goes, and that's not as relevant because we won't be able to address them later?
Thank you for repeating your question. It's great. I can go first. I think based on the way Appeal Issue Number Five is written, specifically, I am okay letting my concern go. I have the concern, but I don't think I can, I can't make the connection myself because the language is pretty clear how the appeal issue five is written. And I don't think the hearings official erred in overall vagueness of the application. Commissioner Baker.
Well, again, I think at this point, it's moot because with two votes, isn't it sort of a moot issue?
Well, you can always state your opinion.
Persuade us.
No, no, I think it's fine.
Commissioner Jaworski.
I call for the question then.
Okay. All those in favor?
Wait.
Oh.
Of it air, okay.
Yeah, you called the question. All those in favor of your motion? Do you need to restate the motion?
That the hearings official did not err in Appeal Issue Number Five. Now, call for the vote.
All those in favor? Those opposed? So that's three in favor, one opposed. So that is the end of all appeal issues, one for the application and five for the opponent. We have homework for staff, yeah?
Yeah, so I just want to be clear. I'd like, Gabe, to kind of just, if you can, outline what those supplemental findings will be again, so that they know on the public works. I mean, I could just say generally.
Well, yeah, I think we will be coming back on Monday with a draft final order that includes supplemental findings based on your conversations today, incorporating some of the information about the public works referral and how it relates to, you know, the issues around public services and facilities being available. I think that in the case of the goalpost ruling, that there would be no supplemental findings because the hearings official's decision was affirmed on that point. Anyway, myself and Ann Davies will be walking through the issues and providing those findings where we think they're needed. We'll also have that revised condition of approval for you to hopefully finalize on Monday with the goal of having the final order completed by the end of the meeting, if we can.
Okay, Commissioner Borowski.
So I have a question about what you just said. Where is the public works report? What appeal issue are you citing, the public works thing that we're...
Well, and so my memo has on page two, a discussion of the public works referral comments, and I believe that they relate to, in our discussion, to the question of wastewater availability under opponent's appeal issue number one, which was denied.
What's that? We didn't act on that. The only appeal issue that we can speak to and write findings to is, in my understanding, is the access removal of vegetation.
So let me explain kind of what's going on here. So what happened was, we had this staff referral comments that suggested not available, right? And then the hearings officer came back and said, no, we think they are available. You're going to affirm that, but I feel like we need you guys to make some supplemental findings that explain the public works referral comments and how you get from there to an approval, which the hearings officer did not do.
So it clarifies that discrepancy or change from the original recommendation in the public works referral and the staff report. It's a cleanup item. It doesn't really change the commission's decision in terms of affirming the hearings official in finding that the services are available. It's a question of explaining how we got there. And it's just, I think, a precautionary way.
It's precautionary. I'll explain. It's because the fear is that someone will come in and say, there's evidence in the record that says you can't approve this. That's the public works referral comments. And the decision doesn't identify that piece of evidence and basically deal with the conflict. So the hearings officer should have done that. We'd like you to do it.
So I just want it for clarity for the public. Once again, you're not actually reaching beyond any of the information within the record, so it's all within the record, and it's just a clarifying component that we're going to be providing.
When can we expect your memo about the, of an additional planning commission member?
Oh, hopefully tonight, tomorrow morning at the latest.
Thank you. Because to me, if we haven't, we haven't made a formal motion...
Tying it all up.
Tying it all up. So to me, in my opinion, it's still open. All of the appeal questions are... All of the appeal questions are, are open for interpretation until the, until the commission votes affirmatively on the final order.
And that's what I'm going to be coming up with an answer on, how much and whether, and how that would play out if your, another commissioner showed up on Monday.
And are you going to run that by other?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments at this time? Questions for staff before Monday? So I just want to repeat that on Monday, the meeting is going to be held in the slot room at the atrium building, 99 West 10th Avenue, starting at 11:30. And our goal will be to finish our deliberations on the appeal on Monday. And if we don't, we will creatively brainstorm that day.
Thank you.
And thank you for following up on those items. And this concludes today's deliberations.